I'd like to call the April 11th meeting of the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals to order. Please take the roll.
Timothy Vig.
Here.
Dean Cars.
Here.
Jeff Braun.
Here.
Dale Patrick.
Here.
John Dunham.
Here.
Deanna Walad.
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Jason Hart.
Here.
Lisa Dole.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
I believe we do not have any minutes to approve from the last, any previous meetings. Special Order of Business, any disclosures? Seeing any?
Is case 2013-039 still on the agenda or has that been moved to another day? Or can I make the disclosure when we get to that?
I believe that that case, the case 2013-039, or yeah, 039 will be postponed to another meeting, but we'll need to amend the agenda to do that. So I would wait, if your disclosure is on that, that case, let's wait for the meeting to be held. It's not going to be at this meeting, so.
Okay. Then I'll wait to make a disclosure until that meeting.
Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case 2013-041, for the record, I'd like to make a disclosure. I do have a professional and somewhat personal association with the petitioner's Geneva Woods Birthing Center. My three daughters were born at the Geneva Woods Birthing Center, not planning to have any more children, but historical associations there. Also, my spouse is a real estate professional in the state of Alaska. The petitioners have asked her, over the past few months, to look into certain properties for them. The property in question she has not been involved with has not shown them or, and is not representing them, in the current action. I don't believe that I have a conflict of interest, but would be willing to entertain further discussion or questions from the board.
Let's deal with Mr. Ron's question for the time being, and then we'll move on to Mr. Hart as soon as we're done with that. I understand that the case that you've disclosed on is, it's actually like a rulemaking for us. It's not really a case where, it's not a variance, it's not an appeal. So, and I believe, I guess it's my understanding that if we are not hearing a variance or appeal, the rules for disclosure, even though they're the same, are somewhat different. And I guess I'd like to hear from other board members that they believe that Mr. Ron has a conflict here.
And also, this is, and they're asking to promulgate an ordinance which would, you would make a recommendation on, and that would go on to the Assembly if I'm correct, Karen, in which case the Assembly is the one making the decision. And it's legislative, considered legislative.
So, we're making a recommendation, the Assembly has to make the final decision.
Certainly, but our recommendation would have some bearing on future outcomes.
Correct. So let's go ahead and, any comments on Mr. Ron's disclosure? Does anybody believe that Mr. Ron has a conflict? Seeing none. Could I get a?
I did have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there any monetary gain or, oh?
Can you begin again, please?
Ms. Dole.
Sorry. My question is just whether there's any kind of financial benefit that you or your wife would stand to gain from if, depending on how this might turn out.
Thanks for the question, Ms. Dole. At this point in time, as I mentioned for the record, my wife is not representing the petitioners, and so if it were to move forward as it currently stands, then my understanding, as reported from my spouse, is that no, there would be no financial gain associated with the outcome of this decision.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ron? I'd entertain a motion on Mr. Ron's disclosure. Mr. Vig, and seconded by Mr. Cars.
Mr. Chairman, I move that, hearing Mr. Ron's disclosure, that we direct him to participate
Mr. Cars, thank you. All right. Any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing none, if you would vote on Mr. Vig's motion. The boards voted and determined that Mr. Ron does not have a conflict in this matter. Mr. Hart, you had made a request to speak as well.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I also had a disclosure for case 2013-041. I work for Alaska Native Tribal Health Consortium, which co-manages a hospital, and our facility has been ramping up its maternal-child health efforts, so I just wanted to disclose that because some people may see that as a conflict of interest, although I do not have a personal financial interest in the case.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hart on his disclosure? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion on Mr. Hart's disclosure. I have motion by Mr. Cars and seconded by Mr. Ron. Is there any discussion? Oh, Mr. Cars.
Yes, just motion to direct Mr. Hart to participate.
And seconded by Mr. Ron. So, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, if you would vote on the disclosure. The boards voted and determined that Mr. Hart does not have a conflict on this matter, so we'll move forward. Any other disclosures before we move on? Okay, seeing none, let's move down to the consent agenda. And we have two resolutions listed under the consent agenda, and I understand from our secretary that we do not have enough votes tonight to pass either one of these motions, so, either one of these resolutions, so I will entertain a motion to postpone these until the next meeting. I have a motion from Mr. Vig, seconded by Mr. Patrick. Mr. Vig.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone acting on resolutions 2013-001 and 2013-002 until we have sufficient members present to take it up.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Okay. Looks like the vote is unanimous to postpone the resolutions until the next meeting. Next matter for the boards' consideration is, doesn't look like we have any appearance requests or unfinished business or actions of the, of public hearings. We'll move down to the regular agenda. No resolutions for approval under the regular agenda. The first matter before the board is case 2013-041, and this is an unusual case. It's a request by, for the board to make a recommendation on a land use for the, looks like the R2M district. And I think what I'm going to do is, oh. This will be a matter that will be heard strictly by the board, there won't be any public testimony. We'll have a presentation from staff, and we will have questions by the board, but it's strictly a presentation by the staff with the board to make the determination. So, with that, I ask the staff to make their presentation on this matter.
Thank you, Chair Dunham. Just to clarify, would the petitioner also have an opportunity to present? As part of the staff presentation?
The only reason I'm hesitating, Karen, is, is I'm wondering, since it's, it's a legislative item, an ordinance, normally it's just a staff presentation and then discussion. I've never seen an ordinance brought forth by a petitioner before.
Okay, that's fine. I guess I'll just let the board know that the petitioner is in the audience if they want to ask questions. They're here to speak to their application.
Thank you.
Okay, so, the petitioner, Geneva Woods Birthing Center, would like to relocate their birthing center to a property in the R2M district. A hospital or nursing facility with one to 16 persons is listed as a conditional use in the R2M district. However, a healthcare facility is not listed as a conditional or a permitted use. So the petitioner is requesting that the zoning board promulgate by regulation that a healthcare facility be a conditional use in the R2M district. According to AMC 2140-015, the zoning board can determine that a land use is similar in character to other permitted uses in a use district. The zoning board shall base its decision on three criteria, which I will discuss later at the end of the report. This regulation, if adopted, would be submitted to the Assembly for final approval. Municipal Code defines a healthcare facility, hospital, and nursing facility. A healthcare facility is a broader umbrella definition that includes hospitals, nursing facilities, among other similar healthcare uses. There is no definition in Municipal Code for a birthing center. According to Alaska statute, a freestanding birthing center means a facility that is not part of a hospital and provides a birth service to maternal clients. Based on the definitions in Municipal Code and state statute, the municipality determined that a birthing center would be a healthcare facility. A birthing center is clearly not a nursing facility, nor is a birthing center a hospital, given the state statute definition that a birthing center is quote "not part of a hospital." So therefore, we came to the determination that a birthing center falls under the broader healthcare facility definition. In 2005, an assembly ordinance was passed that amended several definitions of healthcare-related uses. It's quite known that with the existing Title 21, we don't have a single set of uses that are used in all of our zoning districts. Each zoning district has its own list of uses, which may or may not be the same list of uses that are in another zoning district. That's due to the way we've sort of piecemealed our zoning districts and uses. In the new code, there's one chart, and there's a list of uses and the zoning districts, and it's the same methodology applied to every zoning district. That's not how our code is now. It's been piecemealed through the decades. So, Table 1 on page four of the staff report summarizes in which district healthcare facilities or hospitals and slash nursing facilities are used. So with this ordinance in 2005, they, they sort of changed around the names of these types of uses, and some zoning districts use the term healthcare facility, while others use the term hospital and nursing facilities. As you can see in that table, the only district that would allow a small healthcare facility other than a hospital or nursing facility would be the R11 zoning district, which is the Ternigan Arm. So there is no district in the Anchorage Bowl that would allow a small healthcare facility. You can have one in the PLI, but that says you have to have more than 16 people. So this excessive limitation on healthcare facilities must have been an oversight when they drafted that ordinance. So AMC 2140 lists three standards that the zoning board must apply when promulgating a use by regulation. The first is that the structure or use of land or a structure is consistent with the statement of intent for the use district. Staff found that this standard is met. A healthcare facility is a medical use that will serve the needs of the area. By limiting the size of a healthcare facility to a maximum capacity of 16 people, the medium density urban residential character of the R2M district is protected. Standard number two is that the structure or use of a land or a structure is compatible with the uses listed in the chapter as permitted uses in the district. Staff found that this standard is met. The impacts of a healthcare facility with one to 16 people are similar to other conditional uses in the R2M districts, such as a habilitative care facility, an adult daycare facility, or rooming houses. A hospital or nursing facility, which is a conditional use, could have an even greater impact than a healthcare facility in terms of noise, traffic, and bulk or scale of the building. The conditional use standards for a healthcare facility also require that 25 percent of the lot be preserved as open space, so this will ensure that the facility is compatible with existing uses by providing open space. The final point is that the structure doesn't have a negative impact, or the use doesn't have a negative impact on, doesn't have a negative impact greater than that would be allowed by permitted uses in the district. And it lists four points. Those four points are the exact same points that are reviewed during a conditional use. So, we're not asking that this be listed as a permitted use. The recommendation is that this be listed as a conditional use, and those four points can be addressed on a case-by-case basis through the conditional use process. So with that, the department recommends approval of amending Section 2141 of the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations to allow a healthcare facility with one through 16 persons as a conditional use in the R2M district.
Are there any questions of staff on their presentation? No question? Mr. Ron.
Thank you, through the chair, Ms. Iverson. Can you briefly walk me through how the conditional use process works? Is it purely contained within the ramparts of the department? Is that something that staff does through an in-house process?
Through the chair. The conditional use process requires a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, so notice is sent out to the neighbors, it's posted, and they would look at a specific site and evaluate it on the four standards that are listed in Point 3, plus any additional site-specific standards for a healthcare facility. The main one for a healthcare facility is that there be 20 percent open space.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Ms. Iverson. Just so I make sure I understand, then if this were to be approved by the Assembly, then the applicant would then go through a conditional use application process and public hearing and then that?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And, second question is, just a more of a procedural one, but we don't exactly have a resolution in the packet for approval by this body. There's the Assembly resolution in the, in the packet, I think, but are we, I guess going down to the very last paragraph of your summary, are we actually forwarding to the Assembly our recommendation for approval of the Assembly resolution?
Through the chair. You would get back a resolution reflecting the findings of fact that you make on this case, just like you'd get the resolutions on a variance case? And then what gets forwarded to the Assembly would be this packet, this AR, if anything you do changes, if you, if you were to make some kind of change or something, I would reflect that this was just an example of the resolution that would get forwarded, and then the resolution that gets finally approved to summarize your decision today.
And that resolution has to come back here for approval before the Assembly would presumably take it up as an AR?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Is there any interest by the board to hear from the petitioner on this? Mr. Cars.
Yes, I do have a question of the petitioner.
Okay. If we could get the petitioner to come forward, and if you would...
My name is Barbara Norton.
Would you spell your last name for the record?
N-O-R-T-O-N.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cars.
Yes, Ms. Norton. Could you maybe walk through the process of, of how we are here tonight briefly? Your application goes through that. So, my understanding, you located this facility wanting to use it as a birthing center, but you kind of went into no man's land, I guess, as far as it's not a defined use? Is that...
That's correct, yeah. Most babies are born in a hospital in the United States, so freestanding birth centers are kind of a new thing. We're sort of a hybrid between a home birth and a hospital birth, and so there are a lot of states where they're not licensed. Our state is one that has licensed birthing centers since the 80s, but we apparently have missed some codes in, in being named in different legislations. So, you want to know why this space for us, or?
No, staff's done a good job on their presentation.
She did a great job, yeah.
Just wanted to hear from, as Mr. Chair Dunham has said, this is kind of something new for us, so how, it's come before us this evening and why it's going to...
Well, we're currently in the Geneva Woods Medical Center. We're an established birth center. We've been in existence for almost 12 years, and we are in a 2,800 square foot space, and we have run out of room. We can't, we can't grow where we are. And birthing centers have become increasingly popular in the last several years, and we find ourselves sometimes turning away clients because we don't have the physical space. So this location on Northern Lights is ideal for us because it's close to the UMed district. Our clients feel safe when they're close to a hospital. It is affordable for us. Land in the UMed district is incredibly expensive, and it is, it's a home, and most birthing centers in this country are located in homes, in neighborhoods, because it's not a hospital. People come in and they have a baby, and they go home within four hours. And so it is a home-like environment. This is a home, so it's, but it's a home that's set up on a hill, and it's away from the neighbors, so it wouldn't be disruptive. It's kind of the ideal location for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner?
I have a question.
Okay, Ms. Dole.
Going to the category in which this fits in, I was wondering, you just mentioned that people typically go home within four hours after giving birth, and I was wondering if that was the case, or what was anticipated for this birthing center? Are there, is there an average for how long people stay there, either before birth or after birth, or combined, or?
Before birth is unpredictable. But the after birth is, we, the freestanding birthing center regulations say that this is not an overnight facility, so our birth center, people generally stay three to five hours after giving birth, and they cannot stay longer. If they need to stay longer, we actually take them to the hospital and admit them. So these are, these are low-risk women who have unmedicated births, and everybody, and the babies are unmedicated, and so everybody generally is quite enthusiastic to go home and get in their own bed, so. We've been in existence for almost 12 years. We've had almost 1,000 babies born in our birth center. So we have a lot of statistics, I can tell you a lot of statistics about time spent, you know, how many people go to the hospital, so.
I saw a statistic somewhere in the application or the materials, I wanted to ask about it, said about, you anticipated about 14 per month?
Mm-hmm.
So that, but that's about one every other day, I mean...
Right, that's right.
But there would be three birthing rooms?
Right. Well, we, we have on average about a dozen a month in the birth center. We also practice in the hospital, too, so, but that's about how many, we have about 20 people that sign up for birth center care. Certain amount of them will risk out before they go into labor, and a few people will risk out in labor. So we only end up with, we had 140 last year. Mr. Ron could probably give you a personal experience.
If it would help the board, I'd be happy to.
I think we'll pass on that. Just, any other questions for the petitioner before we release you? Okay, seeing none, thank you. So the matter rests with the board. The way I, I see this at this point is that we need to have a motion to approve this, this proposal, and the motion has to address the three standards that... and the motion has to address the three standards that staff has listed in their packet. So, I'd be interested in hearing a motion for approval. I have a motion from Mr. Cars, and it's been seconded by Mr. Patrick. Mr. Cars.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll take a stab at this. Bear with me. I move that we, with respect to case 2013-041, move that we grant a request to promulgate by regulation, amending Section 2140-001 of the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations to allow a healthcare facility with 1 through 16 persons as a conditional use in the R2M district. Okay. How about if I restate my motion, then?
Thank you, Mr. Cars.
Recommend, the Department recommends approval of a resolution amending Section 2140-001 of the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations to allow a healthcare facility with 1 through 16 persons as a conditional use in the R2M district. I believe that's what I'd said the first time, but...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cars. And that was seconded by Mr. Patrick. Mr. Cars, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Per the staff write-up, this is, and as you'd stated, this is a little bit of an odd request for us, but according to AMC 2140-015, the zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals can determine, or move a regulation forward under Chapter 30.3.40 if there are three different criteria are met, and staff has written their findings. I agree with their findings. Standard one, the structure, land, or use of land or a structure shall be consistent with the statement of intent for the use district. Concur with staff's finding that this standard is met, and again, highlighting the statement, a healthcare facility is a medical use that will serve the needs of the area. Standard number two, the structure or use of land or a structure shall be compatible with the uses listed in this chapter as permitted uses in the district. Again, I concur with staff's finding that this standard is met. The impacts of a healthcare facility with 1 to 16 persons are similar to other conditional uses, including habilitative care facilities, adult care facilities, and roomy houses. Standard three, the structure or use of land or a structure shall have no negative impact on the following items greater than that from uses listed in this chapter as permitted uses in the district, vehicle trip generation, traffic safety and parking, demand for public services and facilities, noise, fumes, other, dust and other environmental pollution, and the maintenance of a logical and efficient development patterns and land use mixes. Again, I concur with staff, this standard is met. The request will be that healthcare facilities be listed as a conditional use, and these standards are identical to the general standards for a conditional use approval. So, for those reasons, I intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cars. Mr. Patrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also intend to support this, and I agree with both staff's findings and Mr. Car's statements, and I'll make that short. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I request clarification on the language of the motion that we're voting on. My understanding was that we, the job for us is to vote on whether or not to recommend approval, as opposed to actually approving resolutions. So, if we can just ensure that...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Ron. I was actually going to bring that up, so. Mr. Cars and Mr. Patrick, with your approval, I'd like to read what I think we are voting on here, and that's zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals recommends amending Section 2140-01 of the Anchorage Municipal Code of Regulations to allow a healthcare facility with 1 through 16 persons as a conditional use in the R2M zone. Does that sound better, Mr. Ron?
Sounds good to me.
Is that consistent with your intent, Mr. Cars?
Yes, it is. I have no objection to that.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, let's vote. Okay, the motion passes. The Board makes the recommendation to the Assembly that the Code of Regulations be amended to allow a healthcare facility in the R2M district. Thank you for coming tonight.
Moving down the agenda here?
Moving down the agenda here, I'd like to entertain a motion to postpone the first case on the agenda, which is case 21, or 2013-039. The petitioner is Corporate Leasing LLC, and be interested in seeing a motion from the Board on that. I have a motion from Mr. Patrick, and I have a second by Mr. Cars. Mr. Patrick?
Yeah, I make a positive motion to postpone hearing on the case 2013-039.
To the May meeting?
Yes, to the May meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Cars, is that consistent with your second?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any discussion?
I would like to say that I...
Ms. Dahl?
I'll have a disclosure for that case, which I'm happy to postpone as well, but in that case, I'll abstain from voting on the motion to postpone.
Okay. We'll take it up when we move to that item. Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification's sake, this postponement is at the request of the petitioner, is it not?
That's correct.
And not because of the Board needing additional time for consideration of the case?
No. I think there was a request to postpone by the petitioner, so...
Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, let's vote on the motion. Okay, we have voted, and the Board has postponed this item until the May meeting. Moving down the public hearing agenda, we have case 2013-040. The petitioner in the case is William and Sherry Gould. It's a request for variance from encroachments into required yard setbacks, and I'd like to kind of read the order of business for variances. In the case of variances, the Board, the Chair introduces the variance and explains the procedure to be followed. The variance case number and the name of the applicant shall be read into the record, which I've done already. The Board will hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. We'll be asking the staff to provide that. The staff will provide a presentation outlining the variance, which won't exceed 10 minutes. Conclusion, the staff presentation, Board members, and the applicant may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The next item is that the applicant will be given time to make their presentation, not to exceed 10 minutes. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant, who must convince the Board by a preponderance of the evidence that the variance should be granted. At the conclusion of the presentation by the applicant, the Board members and staff may direct questions to the applicant through the Chair. The hearing, after the applicant and questions are completed, the hearing of the matter becomes open to the public. Each person testifying has three minutes, and representatives of groups have five minutes. All persons testifying may be questioned by the Board, staff, or the applicant. At the conclusion of the testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The Board shall proceed to develop oral findings and conclusions with regard to the variance and the disposition of the variance. Staff will reduce those oral findings and conclusions to a subsequent adoption by the Board at a later date, which means a resolution. The matter rests with the Board, and the Chair asks for a positive motion from the Board. One last item, decisions of the Board are final, and clearly state on the face that it's a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that parties that are aggrieved have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal with Superior Court. So, with that, I will ask for the staff to provide us with sufficiency of notice on the case before us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On March 19th, 2013, 47 public hearing notices were mailed to the surrounding property owners. The property was posted with public hearing signs, and a public hearing notice was published. At this time, we've received seven comments in support of the variance from the surrounding property owners, and the Eagle River Valley Community Council did not comment on this case.
Are there any objections by the Board to proceeding with this case based on sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, let's hear your case.
The applicant is requesting a variance from AMC 2140-030G to allow her proposed house to encroach 15 feet into the 20-foot front yard setback. The exact building design has not been developed, but the structure will stay within the footprint proposed on the plot plan. The variance request is for a two-story structure with a daylight basement. The subject property is a non-conforming lot of record in the R6 district that has to conform to the yard requirements in the R1A zoning district. The petition's site is a 13,750-square-foot lot located in the Eagle River Valley. The site is steeply sloped, dropping approximately 44 feet in elevation. The petition's site is surrounded on all sides by property that is also zoned R6 and is developed with large-lot, single-family homes. The subject property abuts and takes access from Upper Skyline View Drive. The constructed road terminates approximately, the constructed road terminates approximately at the 1,000-foot topo line that is shown on the proposed plot plan. Upper Skyline View Drive will not be extended further as the road terminates in a dead-end, abutting private property directly west of the petition's site. I'll go over the findings. For finding number one, staff found that this standard is met. The site is irregularly shaped, it's a triangular shape, and the site is also steeply sloped. Therefore, we found that there were exceptional physical circumstances that applied to this lot. For standard number two, the proposed size of this house is on par with the homes in the area. Without a variance, the site could only support a significantly smaller home. So, therefore, we did find that strict application of the code would create an undue hardship on the property owner. For standard number three, the site is a triangular shape, and the shape of the lot and the steep slopes were not self-imposed, therefore meeting standard number three. For standard number four, we found that it would not adversely affect the use of adjacent properties because of the way that Skyline View terminates and has no possibility of extension. Standard number five, we found was met because the variance is dimensional and will not allow a use that is prohibited. Standard number six, we found is met, there's no area-wide impacts that would adversely affect health, safety, or welfare. Standard number five, the one standard we found was not met. The applicant is proposing a 2,100-square-foot building footprint, and it seems possible that a smaller footprint that encroaches less into the front yard setback could be feasible. Since we found that standard number seven was not met, therefore, the Department's recommendation is for denial, but if after the public hearing, the Board establishes findings that all the standards are met, the Department recommends that the approval be subject to the two conditions that are on Page Six of the staff report.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the staff, or by the Board of Staff? Mr. Patrick?
Yes, Ms. Iverson, I have a couple of questions. On Page 16, the traffic engineer comments about, and also it's referenced on Page Two, also the staff packet, where the footing appears will encroach into the five-foot proposed front yard setback. Will that require another variance, or is that okay?
Through the chair, the, there's a second outline of the building, which I believe shows the eaves of the building, the overhang of the building, which is allowed to, I think, go in another two feet. So, we can double-check with the applicant on that question, but it was my assumption, actually, that the inner footprint was the footprint of the walls and the structure of the building in that outline. Normally, we see them, we either see it in a light or one like it's shown, or in a dashed line. So, no, if that is the overhang of the building, there would be no additional variance required.
Okay, thank you. And then, the second question I have is, it appears that, and that may be the overhang also, encroaching to the telecom electric easement, does that require a letter of non-objection from the utility companies?
I believe it's the same type of circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question as well.
Ms. Dahl?
When you addressed the second factor on the, on Page Five, it says that there are 15 constructed homes within a 400-foot radius of the subject site. They range in size from 1,680 to 5,350 square feet, and then there's a statement that says the average size is 3,480 square feet, and I wanted to know, when you said that was the average size, if that was, you know, what kind of average that was, or how that was determined was set, how...
Through the chair, this was just using our KAMA system, which is the Property Assessor's Tax Base, or Tax, it's the Tax Assessor's Database. I did a very unscientific survey of the surrounding properties and used what they showed as the total square footage of the structure. There, you know, it was an indication to me to figure out, you know, how large are these homes, to provide a sense of scale, but I wouldn't, it's not the most scientific, specific number, meaning, you know, I'm not exactly sure if they include garages in that and that sort of thing. Okay.
Any other questions of staff by the board? Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Iverson, I intend to ask the applicant this question, but he refers to a recommendation made by staff in his response to standard number seven. When he says the vacation of the existing right-of-way was explored, the meeting with municipal staff was concluded during the meeting with municipal staff, it was concluded that the variance was the most viable solution. Do you know if that, what the reasons behind that recommendation, if that's accurate, what those reasons might be?
Through the chair. My understanding that that was the conclusion of that conversation, but I was not there. I can't really speak to the specifics of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. Looking at an aerial photo, it appears there used to be a house on this lot. Is that, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. It is burned down.
And do we know was that lot, did that house encroach into any of the setbacks?
I don't know.
Do we know when that house was built? I saw nothing in any of the documentation on when that house was built or any information which we normally see on some of our cases.
Through the chair. It was built in nineteen eighty-six, was when the land use permit was issued for the single-family home.
And last question. On page twenty-two of the staff packet, there are comments from Eagle River Street Maintenance, where they've expressed concerns about the proposed proximity of the house to the right-of-way with regard to snow storage, drainage issues that may come up. Was there any further discussion with Eagle River Street Maintenance with respect to their comments?
Through the chair. I did not follow up with them to further clarify their comments. I think that I discussed them with the petitioner, and they can speak to what they told me. But to me, it seemed like there is a lot of right-of-way there that extends further beyond. And if there's a need for more snow storage, there is a lot of area further on in that right-of-way that extends all the way through that the municipality could use for snow storage.
Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Seeing none, will the petitioners come forward and state your name for the record and spell your last name?
My name is Charlie, excuse me. My name is Charlie Forbes, F-O-R-B-E-S. I'm here representing William and Sherry Ghul, sitting right there. And Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we agree with staff's findings, one through six, but seven, I'd like to spend most of my time discussing that. If you look at the reasoning of standard number two, that also somewhat answers why we feel like what we're asking as far as standard number seven. What you have to realize, this is a lot that, when you go on to the property, I'll be honest with you, I've been surveying a lot of years, and when I walked out there, I couldn't have told you where the property lines are. The road's not aligned perfectly with the center line. The good portion of, if you look at the drawing, where there's a little curve right there, a good portion of that is already on this lot. The end of the road actually ends about forty feet back from the lot, and then you get a kind of an open area that's been graded right there. But this is a non-conforming lot. It has some real restrictions on it, obviously. If we could have flipped the lot, it would have been a lot easier to put a house on it, but we ended up having access at the pointed end. Where you see on the aerial photo, the cleared area, that's also that line that I show is the one-thousand-foot mark. That would be the end of his driveway. It's setting on back bedrock, and then you take a real steep turn down. And if you'll look also on the drawing, you'll see where the septic system is. We've got a real small envelope to put a house there to begin with because we've got the septic system behind us. We've got the access in front. But we also need to leave an area for a reserved septic system that may be needed in the future. And that little bench in between the existing septic system and the house is all there really is. Speaking to the comment on the maintenance for about snow removal, I understand their comment, and I understand with them going out there why they would think that there would be a real problem with that, only in that what they're really looking at is is they think the snow should go on where the lot is with the way the road is. It's actually to the north of that. They've been storing snow next to this lot for as long as the Ghuls have been there for, you know, they said, what, twenty years that you know of? And when the other house was there, there wasn't a problem with it. It, you know, water has one way to go. That's downhill, and it goes straight downhill after you throw it over the side. So I understand their comments, but there's no way the water can drain back towards the house when it goes over where it belongs in the sixty-foot right-of-way. And the area that they have to do that is the length of the lot, which is about two hundred and seventy feet. That's a lot of snow storage. Also, I'd like to bring your attention to the aerial photograph that shows the house. I can't find it. But anyhow, if you look at the drawing, you can see that it's a little bit disoriented with the aerial photograph. That should actually come south a little bit, and you can kind of see how it should fit. But regardless of that, you can see that the house that was there didn't fit the lot anyway. There were encroachments. I saw what, I'm not even sure you can call it an as-built. It was a drawing of what was supposed to be there, and a lot of stuff was left off of it. And I think the reason why was because it encroached into the easement and encroached somewhat into the setback before. But I can't say for positive because there weren't numbers that I could see on it. So, you know, we're talking about, you know, what's a reasonable footprint. Two builders have looked at this, and the footprints are somewhat similar. And, you know, you can see where I've shown the driveways and this little bulb, excuse me, little bulb area. We really do need a two-car garage just for the fact that we need to be able to park in the garage because you'd only be able to park one car up front without it having, sticking out into the right-of-way. So that was the reason for a two-car garage. And let's face it, up here, that's a minimum. So I'd like to reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal. If you have any questions.
Okay, are there questions of the petitioner by staff or by the board? Mr. Vig.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Forbes, regarding standard number seven and the petitioner's statement that municipal staff recommended against seeking a vacation of the right-of-way, were you involved in that discussion?
Yes, sir, I was. What we did is, is we looked at it, and we thought our best solution was to ask for a vacation of right-of-way. And after sitting with staff, there's a few of the names on here, but there were quite a few more people than what signed here. It was, we had fire there. We had private development, traffic, and Dave Whitfield with the planning department. And when we went, if we were to go for the vacation, what would end up happening is every, the road would actually have to be improved and moved downhill a little way. And once you did that, that really decreases our building area because we start getting pushed further back because our lot would be, how do I explain it? You know, fire needed a certain kind of turnaround, which takes up quite a bit of room. And traffic, you know, they wanted the road improved and everything. And they all decided that, look, you know, we probably wouldn't recommend the vacation of the right-of-way. Your really, your real solution is to go for a variance, and that's why we, why we're here for a variance.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Carr.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Forbes. On, within the staff packet, I don't know if you've had a chance to read through the whole packet. We've got on pages sixty-four and sixty-five, there's a resolution and an old plot plan showing there was a request to have a variance granted for, again, a five-foot setback. And that was denied by the zoning board in nineteen eighty-five, it appears. This is a new case, and every case needs to stand on its own merits. But why is, I guess, mine's a multiple, multiple question. I have multiple questions. I guess that's a statement. And my question is, how is this, you know, what new information is there that we'd want to look at granting this variance? And then I'm also going to follow that up with discussions about standard number seven. And so maybe we can hit the first one.
If you'll look at this timeframe-wise, this variance request, I think, was in nineteen eighty-five. And the subdivision that our lot is in was recorded, I think, nineteen seventy. What's changed from then till now is there's two subdivisions that were developed where the right-of-way is cut off that wasn't there before. It was left open to continue on the road, which now there's no way that it will be. And that's the big difference in these two times. Because now you have a right-of-way that exists there, and about the only thing it really can be used for is snow storage. It really has no other purpose.
Thank you. My second question, this is a
And all those subdivisions were recorded in nineteen ninety.
The subdivision to the west?
Yes, both of them.
And my second question, this lot is very small relative to the other lots, adjacent lots. Yet the house that's being proposed is a fairly significant size. I venture an opinion that maybe this house is too big for this lot. How would, and that, that's one of the reasons that standard seven is not met. How would you respond to that?
I'd respond to that real easy. I put houses larger than this on seven thousand square-foot lots, eight thousand square-foot lots dimensionally. And I don't think it's unreasonable. What makes it look unreasonable, if you can imagine, is because we're holding the house up towards the point. But when you consider that visually, it would, it's not going to look any different than any other house there because of what's happened with the right-of-way not going through. But as far as on a thirteen thousand-square-foot lot, a twenty-one-hundred-square-foot footprint is not big at all.
Last question. Mr. Forbes, what would be the, I understand the desire to have a two-car garage. What would be the impact of shifting this footprint so that the setback was ten feet instead of five feet? What would be your choices there if this board? We have a couple of, we can pass it, grant the variance. We can amend it. We can deny it.
Well, I think my real hard part would be on the garage because it would, it really needs to be up that far with, where I have that one-thousand-foot topo line is the very tip-top of the bedrock where everything stops, right at that, that line. And so, you know, that's where you want the garage to come to that point so that you have a level entrance into your garage and not, you know, sloping downhill. But if your question is, would we accept a lesser setback than five feet or a greater setback than five feet, I suppose we would. Would like to discuss it, but it would require some. Boy, I'd just hate to make the garage any smaller. You know, it might be able to be smaller by two feet because I have it at twenty-six so that you have room to park and walk around the vehicles, too. But, you know, twenty-four would be the least I think you'd want to make it. Did that answer your question? Or did I not understand what you were going for?
Through the chair. Have you developed building plans? Or do you just have a, is this just a generic footprint that's shown on there?
This is one of two plans that different builders had looked at for the lot and, you know, challenging it at best. But we took the smaller of the two. But, you know, we were reluctant to go on with plans until we knew that we were going to be able to have something to work with.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions by the board of the petitioner?
I have a question. I just want to be sure that I understand then. In your, in the application, there's the fold-out that shows the example of a proposed house footprint, two thousand one hundred ninety-one point five seven square foot of area. Is that, what is that, what's being proposed? Or is that just one of the possible samples? Or what? I swear I saw variation in the, that the, it would be between two to three, four thousand square feet. And I'm just not quite sure what
Okay, what that has to do with, in one case, we're talking footprint. And the other case, we're talking about usable square footage. In the footprint, the garage is counted part of that. But as far as livable square footage, the garage is not included in that. And that would include, you know, if the basement was level, livable, that would include the basement floor, the first floor. And if you put a second floor, would include that also.
Okay, so is this proposed house footprint definitely the one that's being proposed or is, or not?
No, it's, it's
Just a possibility? Just a possibility?
It was an example, I guess. I had two to kind of work from, we picked the smaller of the two because we're, you know, trying to be as minimal as possible and still have a good flow with the house and livable space and, and everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Are there folks here that would like to testify on this matter before the board? Anyone? Okay, seeing none. Okay, is there rebuttal by the staff on this matter?
Just two things that I wanted to state. For that old variance case, I couldn't find the minutes from the meeting, and so the resolution didn't really have a lot in it. And so I just want you to know that I looked for it, and I couldn't find the discussion or the reason really as to why it was denied, and I didn't feel like the, the resolution made it clear. So I looked and I couldn't find it. And the other point that I wanted to make was about the footprint and the, whether or not it's proposed. So because they are not, have an exact footprint at this time, I tried to articulate the variance so that condition number one says that the maximum extent of the encroachment shall not exceed the footprint as shown on the plot plan. So what I, what I proposed was that, that's their footprint, and if they come back with a building design that's not exactly that, but it is no more than that, then that would be fine. But if they couldn't say, put another step out even further down the lot or something like that, that's how I tried to address the fact that they didn't have an exact plan and wasn't requiring that, but they were only asking for the encroachment as it's shown here, not that they could encroach for the entire fifteen feet, the whole width of it, if that makes sense.
I think it does. Any questions by the board of staff on their rebuttal?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ron.
I do have a quick question on your last statement there, Ms. Iverson. I'm still trying to make sure I understand your intent with recommendation number one. So then rather than proposing a dimensional, as in the built house shall not encroach within four feet of the right-of-way, you are in fact intending a sort of coverage approach then with that recommendation?
Through the chair, I still, the request, it would be on page one, that the, that the recommendation would be a variance to allow, and this wasn't important, to allow a two-story structure that encroaches only fifteen feet at the greatest point of encroachment. But then a condition clarifies and says that that encroachment is per this plot plan, which shows this latter footprint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Any other questions? Rebuttal by the applicant, I think. Okay, we have four minutes and thirty-seven seconds left.
Okay, do I need to state my name?
Please state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Okay, my name is Sherry Gould, G-O-U-L-D. So I just want to try to give you guys a little bit of a visual. When you look at the little triangle drawn on the map, it feels like you're trying to put a big house on the small part of the lot. But if you stood at the dead end of Upper Skyline and looked at this space, there's a house over here, a whole bunch of open space, part of which is this triangular lot and part of which is the sixty-foot easement, and a house over here, and the view goes on for days. So it's this dead-end street with otherwise very large lots, oops, excuse me, you know, this amazing view and a very natural, so in other words, it doesn't feel like you're trying to cram something into a small space, even though it looks like it may be on the map. And also, there's a very natural shelf, as Charlie described, with the way the lot drops off. And so two different builders have designed these two different homes that Charlie was referring to, both of which were a ranch over a daylight basement. The lot is very, very conducive to that. And so if you do a house like that, you know, you want to fit certain things on that main level. And so if you start trying to scrunch the sides in a little bit further, it starts to make it really hard to design a house that's conducive to the lot. You know, it starts to look like those houses that are in neighborhoods with the little narrow lots and they're stacked up, you know, tall and narrow kind of thing. And that's just not the kind of house that this lot, this location, this neighborhood is really conducive to. So just wanted to try to describe that a little bit and give you a little bit of a sense of what it feels like when you're standing at the end of that lot or at the end of the street facing that lot. It feels very wide open. Do I need to stay for questions?
Okay. Mr. Vig, and then Mr. Ron.
Chairman, Ms. Gould, I seem to remember this lot being before us in the past year or so. Was it on the agenda and polled or?
Well, last fall, one of the larger home design was intended for, I mean, Troy Davis designed the larger home for this lot. And then because we, he discovered that he couldn't build that house on this lot because of the setback requirements, he abandoned, you know, that, we abandoned that plan, but it never came before the board.
It wasn't on the agenda?
No, no, no. It was just discovered that in order to build that house, we would need to get a variance. And so we started pursuing with the Muni, well, what are our options to make this lot buildable? And as we discussed, we initially pursued vacation of the easement and ultimately determined that this was our better, our better solution.
I'm sorry, they start to run together after a while, so I, but I think it's important to consider that you had another plan that perhaps was somewhat larger and you've come back with a smaller footprint this time. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Gould, thank you for the perspective you provided. I have a few additional, well, one, one question about that perspective. You talked about the view from the end of Upper Skyline Drive. I'm interested in the view further up Upper Skyline from Mount Nash Drive further to the east. Can you talk about what impact encroaching so far into the setback might have on the view from that point?
Zero. Yeah, the views from all, yeah, everybody in that area has a view. It's because the way the hill drops off, people on Mount Nash will look right over this house, especially if it can be a ranch over a basement, which again requires a wide enough house to get everything you need on that main level on top of a basement. If you have to shrink it, then you have to stack it to get what you need in a reasonable home for the area. But even still, again, because of the slope, I would imagine most people on Mount Nash could look right over this house.
I do have a follow-up question.
I thought maybe you were looking for property on Mount Nash. Wanted to know about the view.
Someday perhaps. I do live in Eagle River, but not that part. Do you live in the area immediately around this subject property?
Yes.
Is there a lot of traffic that comes down Upper Skyline and doesn't realize that it dead-ends, turnaround traffic, things of that sort or?
You know, there's a no outlet sign at the top, and then, and then even right at the corner of Mount Nash and where Upper Skyline continues, there's kind of another no outlet. You do get some people, but what you don't know is, did they think the road went through or were they just coming to check out the view or they just get lost trying to find their friend's house? You know, I don't know. Some, but not an excessive amount.
I think you can probably see my interest is in maneuverability on that dead end. Would you say there's adequate maneuverability within the built right-of-way?
Yes.
For vehicles and travel?
And there was, I remember when the house was there, and even when there used to be a house there with the driveway and everything, there was still plenty of room for somebody to go down and turn around and, so, no problem.
Thank you.
Are there any other? Ms. Dahl?
Yes, you said you remembered the house that was there previously. And it's, looking at the information we were given, it looked like there was no variance granted for that, so it did not encroach in the setback. So I guess I'm just wondering what the difference is in terms of the house that was there before versus, you know, the size or type of house you're trying to, you hope to build now.
Didn't you find that it did encroach? Yeah. We think that it did encroach not only into the, I mean, I don't know, but Charlie said he discovered that it did encroach into the setback, but not only that, it encroached into the neighboring property. So it was hanging off on both sides. But nobody seemed to mind, and it looked beautiful and it fit in with the setting.
And is the house that you're thinking of building, would it be along the same lines or how would it be different? Is that a ranch as well?
I think that one might have actually been a three-story or at least sort of a two-and-a-half if I was in it once or twice. And as I recall, it was a main level over a basement, but then above the main level there was sort of a loft area. So I don't know if it was a full three stories or if it was sort of a two-and-a-half because of the loft. I don't recall exactly. It was possibly similar.
Any other questions for the petitioner on their rebuttal? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
The matter rests with the board now. I am looking for a positive motion on the, on the request before us. From the board. Mr. Ron makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Vig, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case number two thousand thirteen dash zero four zero, I move that we grant a variance from AMC twenty-one point four zero point zero three zero G minimum yard requirements to allow a proposed two-story structure with a daylight basement to encroach fifteen feet at the greatest point of encroachment into the twenty-foot front yard setback of a non-conforming lot of record in the R six district that conforms to the yard requirements in the R one A district in accordance with AMC twenty-one point five five point zero two zero non-conforming lots of record, in accordance with Department of Recommendations numbers one and two on page six of the staff packet.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Mr. Vig?
Second to motion.
Okay, Mr. Ron, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'll keep it brief and probably take advantage of the opportunity to come back around as discussion progresses. I don't know exactly where I stand on the motion at this point in time and would seek other board members' input. I will however say that I agree with staff's findings of fact for standards one through six in the staff packet. There are clearly exceptional extraordinary physical circumstances in standard one, if that's met, standard two and three as well, carrying on through four through six, and would incorporate those for the record by reference. Regarding standard number seven, I was immediately, initially thrown into concern over the size of the lot, excuse me, the size of the house on, on the lot. I appreciate the petitioner's description of how and why they are placing the footprint in its current location and think that the proposed size of the house based on those houses and lot sizes in, in the area is reasonable, but I'm not, I'm not fully convinced that I, that I feel that way. I do have concern about the significant nature of the encroachment and also want to make sure we're on good fitting footing in terms of that department recommendation as far as the maximum extent of the encroachment shall not exceed, whether we're talking about the proposed footprint, five feet back from the right-of-way or, or what have you. So I'll stop for now.
Thank you. Mr. Vig?
Thank you. I also concur with staff's finding of fact with regard to standards one through six. And I won't delve into those, but when I first approached this case, it seemed to me that it would, I was struggling with the fact that there appeared to be a way out of the variance that, that a vacation of the right-of-way could have, could have solved. And so I was thinking that perhaps that would have been the, initially the best course to follow. And then if, if that was denied for whatever reason, we'd have a little tighter bounds around this case, but it would still come down to standard number seven, whether this is a de minimis variance, I suppose, at that point. But I think the applicant had some knowledge about why that right-of-way vacation wouldn't work here, and I can understand that, given the fact that turnaround radii and such would probably require wider than the sixty feet and some, you know, at the widest part of the bulb, so I can see the point. So it really comes down to whether, whether this is a de minimis variance or not. It seems to me that we've heard a lot of cases in the past where two-car garages are sort of the, the minimum that, or an expectation that people have when they build a home in Anchorage, Alaska these days. And so I can agree that, you know, twenty-six feet is probably not, not excessive. But, you know, I do, I do struggle with whether, you know, overall, a three to four thousand square foot structure is as small as it could be. That, the overall structure, square footage, though, and how that relates to the size of the variance is kind of the thing I'm struggling with. So I'm interested to hear from other board members as well.
Okay. How about other board members weighing in on this? Mr. Cars?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo the comments, concur with the findings of staff and Mr. Ron and Mr. Vig with respect to standards one through five, one through six, find that they are met. And I like the, Mr. Ron and Mr. Vig, possibly some of the other board members are struggling with standard number seven, whether it's met or not. And my initial reaction was, was that of Mr. Vig, that perhaps there was a plating action that, that could take place that would negate the need for this, this variance. But I think we'd still be needing to address the variance because of the garage and the location to the, if it was a cul-de-sac bulb. And following with, along the same line of, of Mr. Vig, that, yeah, I think twenty-six foot width is a reasonable width, probably a minimum width for a two-car garage, which again, this board has found garages in, in Anchorage are, while not a necessity, they're very common. a necessity, they're, um, very common. So, um, that, walking through my process, I think we're looking at a, a five-foot or a encroachment of fifteen feet into that, that setback. And I, I guess I'm comfortable with the way staff has written, uh, the findings that, um, you know, we don't have to have, uh, an actual footprint to approve. It's more looking at, as a whole, the, the topography, the location of the lot, the location of the right-of-way, the location of this road and the fact that there's no future extension of skyline, upper skyline that would be necessary to serve properties to the west, um, make me feel that while that right-of-way is probably in excess and could be vacated, I think there's other things that are going on that might not make that as, as easy of a transition. So, a- as a whole, I, perhaps there could be some minor tweaking of the building footprint, but I'm not an architect and don't pretend to be one, but I do think a twenty-six foot wide garage is, is a minimum. And carrying that through, I think that would put us in a five-foot, the need for a five-foot setback. So, with, with that in mind, I, I believe I intend to support the motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cars. Ms. Dahl.
Um, I, thank you. I concur with everyone as to findings one through six. And I've really struggled with number seven as well. I, I, and I'm still not sure. And what I looked at, or what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that petitioner has the, the burden of, of showing that it's the, the minimum variance that will make possible a reasonable use of land. So, I thought the questions as to, you know, why ten feet, you know, why, why fifteen feet versus ten feet, um, were, were good. And I appreciate your insights as to the width of garages and the board's previous findings as to those being, um, considered, you know, necessities. I, I guess I'm still not quite, um, sure because that, that, the garage was the main reason given, um, but when I look at the proposed footprint, it seems to encompass more than just a garage unless I'm looking at it incorrectly. Um, so that's my comment. Or questions?
Thank you, Ms. Dahl. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, I too struggle with, uh, number seven, uh, but in looking at it and some of the data we received, the average size of the other homes, uh, the layout of this lot, the location of the bedrock, I do believe that this variance is a minimal variance and it will make, uh, allow them the same use of the land as other, other parties in the area. So, I intend to support the variance.
Thank you. Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I agree with, uh, staff's findings one through six and, uh, given the average size of homes in the area as well, I also, um, believe that standard seven has been met and intend to support the, uh, support the matter.
Thank you. Mr. Ron.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Based on board member comments, um, regarding standard number seven, Mr. Cars' comment about the width of garage being reasonable and us historically, um, acknowledging two-car garage as a right commonly enjoyed by houses of this size and scale, um, I do find that standard number seven is met and intend to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. Any other comments by board members? Okay, I'd like to offer my comments. One, I think the petitioner made a compelling case for the, the variance request in that, uh, they mentioned the, the two additional subdivisions that went in in the nineties. And basically, um, my, my view of it is that, is that municipality basically determined that this extension of Upper Skyline Drive really wasn't needed. It could have, could have been a vacation, could have been an extension over to Ralph's Circle, but, um, to me, that, that, that was the time that the municipality had to actually rectify this dead-end issue and, and they didn't. So, some of this I can see, uh, being, you know, not of the petitioner's making, but actually have a, you know, just not dealing with the, the issue at hand at the time. Um, and I, I suppose the reason that they did that is because it would take a hell of a turnaround there, um, if they didn't push it through, and they probably had some reason for not wanting to push it through. The other thing that I noted here is that, uh, I didn't see any opposing comments from the community. And I don't, don't believe that, um, what the petitioners are asking for is unreasonable in this case. I think a two-car garage is reasonable. I think being able to park in that garage and not, not have it, uh, you know, subject to any kind of, uh, onerous, uh, action because it's, it's in the right-of-way is, is, it's a reasonable request. And I, I concur with the other board comments on this, that all seven standards are met. So, those are my comments. And with that, uh, unless I hear any other comments, uh, we'll take up the vote on this. So, we're waiting.
For the computer.
For the computer. The board has voted to grant the variance request. I need to read something for the record here. The decision of the board is final and we've made, um, we state clearly on the, on its face that the final decision with respect to all issues involving this case and that the parties have thirty days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal in Superior Court. So, if, uh, if anyone is aggrieved by this decision, they have thirty days from the time that, um, a written decision is sent to you to, to file that. I'm assuming you won't, but, um, so that, uh, that concludes our, uh, consideration of this case. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We have no other matters before the board, um, regarding public hearing items. Are there any reports that anyone has from the board? I wouldn't expect any, but if you have any, we'll, we'll hear them. Seeing none, um, board comments. Are there any comments from the board? Um, Mr. Ron.
Just again, like to welcome our new board member, um, and wish her well in her tenure on the board and otherwise.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Cars.
Uh, just one, one other comment, um, and I'll reiterate, I believe, what Mr. Ron said last, last month, but regarding the two resolutions that we have, that we've had to postpone, this now being the second month, if, if any board members could listen to those cases, that would at least allow us to act on, on those. Realize it's not the most exciting thing to do in the world is listening to a case, but, um, I don't know if these are in dire need of resolutions or not, the, the properties, but maybe keep that in mind.
And, and that does bring up a good matter that these petitioners that are waiting on the resolutions, they basically, their thirty-day, day appeal period doesn't start until they get the resolution. So, if you would, uh, I believe you can listen to the, the cases online.
You can, you can? That was just bringing my next question, my question, which was of the people here, who will be at next month's meeting?
Um, I think it's the ninth of May.
Yes, May ninth.
Anybody not? One?
Well, the new person's starting off bad already.
Yeah, Mr. Patrick doesn't want to miss another meeting. He got elected as parliamentary.
He'll be, he'll be chair by the time he misses the next one.
Okay, other than one person, it looks like we'll have a fully, mostly constituted board. And, um, if you would, um, those of you that, like me, that, that weren't at that meeting, try to listen to the tape online, if that's available.
It's available online, the only, the, the three new members though, weren't members of the commission at the time, or the board at the time.
Okay, then I, I will make a point of listening to it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board members? Uh, seeing none, we stand adjourned.